I'd like to call the December 3 meeting of the Carver Select Board to order. The time is now 6 o'clock. This meeting is being recorded by Area 58 Access Media, Channel 9, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for a listing and application. Would you all mind please standing for the pledge?
Pledge and meekness to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, all my nation under God, indivisible, literate, just as we're all.
All right. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who we provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office. That is now our responsibility. And especially we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we may have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen. Thank you. All right. Next, citizens' participation. Would anyone like to come up and speak? Seeing no one approach. Next item on our agenda, what I'd like to do is we do have a joint meeting with the Capital Outlay, and I think you've posted for six, so I would ask, Mr. Germaine, do you want to open your meeting?
Sure. To call the meeting of the Capital Outlay Committee, the time is 6:03.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, retirement acknowledgement of Special Police Officer Alberto Silva. Chief, would you mind coming up?
Thank you for having us again. So, good evening, and thank you for giving me a few minutes to speak to you. Tonight, we will honor and recognize a member of the Carver Police Department. After 32 years of service and six with the town of Carver, Officer Alberto Silva has retired. Prior to becoming a police officer, he joined the United States Navy, serving three years full-time and seven years in the Naval Reserve. Officer Silva then began his career within the veteran police department in 1995. During that time, he worked as patrol officer and then a detective in the family services unit. In addition, he was a member of the Honor God and the dive team. In December of 2018, he transferred as a full-time police officer to the Carver Police Department. Over the past six years, he's worked as a patrol officer on each of our shifts and spent nine months as our school resource officer. He is also a member of our Honor God. In reviewing his personnel folder, one finds many compliments from citizens regarding his empathy, compassion, and good work over the years. However, one particular incident comes to mind. In May of 2019, Officer Silva, along with Officer Rudolph and members of Carver EMS, responded to a call for a woman who was in labor and about to deliver a baby. The baby was in distress and needed immediate care, and Officer Silva assisted with other members of the team, and that baby was delivered in the house and then transported safely to the hospital. So, he was present there. We should have given him a stork pen at the time, but we didn't. Officer Silva has also assisted with many of our community service events that the union and department carry out every year, including Carver Night Out and the Christmas Toy Drive. And with the board's prior approval at the last select board meeting, he will continue to assist the community as a special police officer, doing details for us. And at this time, I would take a moment to present Officer Albert Silva, Alberto Silva, with a plaque in appreciation of his years of service. Presented to Officer Alberto Silva, in recognition and appreciation for your 32 years of outstanding public service, this department and our community are better places to live and work, thanks to your many years of dedicated service. On your final tour of duty, November 2, 2024. Thank you.
Congratulations on that.
Well, thank you again for giving us some time to do that, and it's very important to recognize the officers as they move on. Thankfully, they'll be sticking around for a little while with us as a special police officer, and we won't, we'll miss them on a daily basis, but we'll still see them around town. Thanks again for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, the application for common victual license. We have Pizza Mania LLC, DBA Giorgio's Pizza, and 105 Main Street. How do you want to handle this, they usually typically come up, or?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is anyone here representing these companies?
Hi.
Please state your name and the company you represent.
I'm Robert Harriman, Giorgio's Pizza, Pizza Maniac LLC.
Great. Are there any questions or issues with the licenses?
No.
No. All right. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for your great food.
That's right.
And now, next is an approval of a seasonal population, the approval of seasonal population for the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. Mr. Gannon, is that something you'd like to lead with?
Sure, I could just, you know, so we just estimate the population on July 10, 2025 at 12,645. This probably has more to do with your coastal communities, really, where they have fluctuations in seasonal population. Carver's very stable, so we do project that.
That's about 100 more people than the last time. It's a lot.
All right. Anyone like to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve this.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Zero. All right. Next item, approval of 2025 licenses liquor in common, victual class 1, 2, 3, and commercial garage. Entertainment, automatic amusement conditioned upon taxes being paid in full. All right. Anyone like to speak on behalf of any of these organizations? Nope. So typically, the process, I believe, is we would approve these based on all taxes being paid, as stated. Has that been confirmed?
Correct. Once we've confirmed that.
Okay.
So, will you want to approve them all tonight with the vote being contingent upon all taxes being paid in full? That way, when they do pay their taxes in full, we can release them?
Mm-hmm.
If we wait till the next meeting, we can't release them?
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Any other questions, issues, or concerns? Seeing none?
I just, my only question is, do we have to specify in the motion that it's contingent upon all taxes?
Yes, it says, he read the motion, that it is contingent on all taxes being paid in full.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Zero. All right. Next item, a hearing for all alcoholic licenses. Three Sips Brewing Company LLC located on 145 South Main Street.
We still have a minute.
Oh. 6:10, 6:09.
Excuse me.
There it is, 6:10.
Yep. There we go. We just made it.
Right on time.
All right. Does anyone here like to speak on behalf of this organization?
No.
Please state your name and your organization.
Sure. Rob Pellegrini. I'm an attorney representing the applicant, Three Sips. Do I need to hand in green cards? Yes, okay. Oh, okay. Did I just take apart what you needed exactly? All right. Okay, thanks. All right. So, I assume you're all somewhat familiar with the application.
I'm sorry, sir. Could you speak into the microphone for people at home?
Oh, sure. Yes. Sorry about that. I assume you're all familiar with the location and the application itself as well.
And through the chair, shall we, could we have the other gentleman's name and?
Oh, sure.
Daniel Mall. I'm the manager.
Okay.
For Three Sips Brewing.
Thank you.
So, the application is for 145 South Main. It's an application for a Section 12 new. Nobody on the application has ever had a previous license or anything like that. It's for inside and outside as well, which you've probably seen on the plans already. As you can see, a significant part of the request has to do with the outside facilities. It's fully enclosed as required by the ABCC, mostly grass area, so, and picnic tables. And there's also reuse of the inside, which I forget what it was before, some type of a restaurant?
Oh, yeah, the Little Red Smokes.
Yeah. And so, they're reusing that. There's 10 places at the bar, 20 places for regular-type seating. There is going to be food as well, which is nice. Plenty of parking.
Great.
I can answer whatever questions you might have. I just didn't want to make it overly complicated.
That's fine. Do any questions from the board?
On the outside, is, how is that going to be bound? I assume that's along the road there, the main road? Is that where it's all going? And is, how's that going to be? What's the boundary going to be on that?
Yes. It's going to be a 42-inch-high fence. I didn't get any cut out of what type of fence or anything like that.
Yeah, we haven't really chosen. We haven't gotten that far yet with what type of fence it's going to be, but, you know, whatever's needed.
So, I mean, obviously, the ABCC only needs it to, you know, prevent minors from easily entering in and getting served, so. And obviously, where it's going to be on the road, everyone would want it to be attractive. But we haven't chosen anything yet.
Will the access to the outside be through the restaurant, or will it have its own entry and exit?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it would be through the inside?
Yes, the ABCCs require us to put a new storefront emergency ADA compliant door for the access to the outside, to the end.
Okay. So, I can show you.
Yeah, I don't think we saw those plans. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, we did not see that. Thank you.
So, as you can see there, the fence goes around everything. You have to go in through the front of the restaurant in order to get inside.
Okay. Will there be an emergency, like, exit from the out, through the outside?
Excellent question. There's one that goes out into that grass area, and there's one near the restroom, sort of on the left side of the plan, right under some of the numbers. And there's one extra one as well, but I think that's in the kitchen area. So, as far as public, there's two, and, you know, private would be one extra one.
And maybe last question. When do you plan to open?
We're hoping.
A year ago? Yeah. Six months ago, realistically. Just going through the motions, we're hoping, we're hoping to be open March, April.
Okay. Thank you. Great.
One quick question. Is there an exit within the fence, except for the one going into the building?
No.
And that's not required by ABC?
Just to be clear, though, you mean something to exit from the grass area to just leave?
In case the building's on fire, yeah.
Wouldn't be a good idea, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Some type of emergency exit, that's what I was going to ask as well, yeah.
Okay. Yes, that's a great idea. We can add that. I would suggest that it be in the back of the building, so it's easier to control.
In the back of the fence?
Yeah, sort of on there.
Mm-hmm. That sounds good.
Okay.
The only question I have, I'm assuming, you know, I'm not sure it says it on here, do you have to be TIP certified? Everybody is TIP certified?
Yep. They do. And am I confusing clients? Do you have that yet? No. Okay. No, he doesn't have it yet, but.
But he has applied to the state for his brewery permit?
Not brewery permit yet. That's, so, Section 12 is just going to be for him to start serving. Next step would be pub brewery and the federal brewing permit application, which we kind of do at the same time.
Okay.
So, on our end, we have probably three more months worth of work.
Okay. And maybe, Mr. Gannon, you can answer this question, the process. This is a new license, so would the Smokes have turned in their license, and this now, this is now replacing it? Is that how it works?
No, the license just lapses, and they applied for a new one.
Okay, the gentleman did, okay. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Is there any other public comment, or you're not going to do that?
Yeah, it is a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any comments from the public?
I have a question. May I?
Sure.
The only thing that, and this is strictly from a public comment, I don't have anything to do with the select board. I know there's a fence out there, so I assume that fence is being taken down, because right now, it's a three-post, split rail. Anybody can climb over it, coming or going. Are you going to put up a solid fence that's 42 inches high, is going to be like a privacy fence? What's the insurance that a kid can't jump from the street into the fenced area and obviously from the fenced area out into the street? 42 inches is not real high, so I guess that's my only question. Perhaps the board would like to take a stab at that, but.
I can tell you what the ABCC's requirements are, less than you'd probably like to see based on how you phrase the question. They allow very little as far as, it's just something that would inconvenience somebody and that would make them sort of obvious when they were sort of getting around it. So, if you want something in particular, yeah, now's definitely the time to say it, because the ABCC has very low requirements on that.
Mr. Gannon?
Well, I'm just thinking, 48 inches is only four feet. There are a lot of kids, I mean, 42, it depends on the fence you get, but a lot of kids are really good climbers.
Yeah. Okay. I think appearance-wise, it's probably important not to do something too much, because we have to keep in mind that in order to get served in this location, you'd have to enter into the building.
Right.
Right? And get served from a bartender. There's other locations where it might be easier to get a drink, but.
Oh, no, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about a family with kids, little kids.
Yeah.
The danger, such, I'm not talking about whether somebody should be drinking or not.
Leaving the area.
Completely different.
Running into the street or something.
Yeah.
Ah, I see. Yeah, these are all.
I mean, if you have a stockade fence, 42 inches is probably okay.
Okay.
That's what, that's just my opinion. I don't know.
Mr. Gannon?
I was going to say, I've seen places where they actually put a wristband on if you're outside. That way, if anyone hopped the fence, you know, they wouldn't get served, you know, because they check everybody's IDs, put a wristband on you, and I think that's been the common practice.
Well, again, I wasn't talking about children drinking.
But you were talking about children, you were talking about people getting out.
Safety, yes.
And three and a half feet might not be tall enough, you're figuring.
And that fence is really right on the street.
It is on the street.
And that's a pretty, pretty.
Busy.
Heavily traveled, fast.
Yeah.
Before you know it, there's a problem.
Yeah. So, are you going to bring the fence in slightly from where the current one is now?
This plan doesn't show me where the present one is.
Well, as Mr. Germaine pointed out, the current one is very close to the street.
Okay. This appears to be several feet.
I believe this is what Gavin used as where the current fence is.
Okay.
I'm not seeing, oh, here's a scale.
Yeah, so the, it looks like it's probably about 11 or 12 feet off the, you know, paved way.
Actually, it, it's much closer than that.
Okay.
3/16 of an inch is one foot for it.
I'm just comparing it to the width of the parking stall.
It's about three feet.
Yeah, pretty far off South Main.
Where do you see the?
On the scale, the bottom left.
Where is it? I'm not seeing it.
The bottom left-hand corner of the plan.
To propose exterior outdoor plan, it says 3/16.
We're looking at.
It's equal to one.
3/16 equals.
One.
One foot.
Okay.
3/16 is one foot.
But if it is to scale, it looks like it's the width of a parking spot, is what you're thinking.
I mean, that's not really that, that far.
There is a gate.
Oh, and there's a gate. I see that.
Yeah, there is a gate.
On the street. It's drawn on the fence.
Oh, yeah, there is a gate on the street.
We might not want to have that there. You might want to put it where you indicated earlier.
I don't know even why.
I don't know why that's there, honestly.
Well. There will not be one there.
Yeah, absolutely not.
And I think the scaling is based on when you print it out on a large piece. I'm just going by the width of the parking stalls there, which have to at least be nine feet.
I don't think so. I'm sorry, but, no, it's my opinion.
Well, yeah.
The optics of it are, the existing fence is, in my opinion, very close to the street.
It is.
And now, there's a gate on the corner.
Right.
Which is a terrible idea.
Yeah. There will not be a gate there.
I don't know where that confusion came from. There definitely isn't a gate, and then we'll be absolutely devastated. I have children. I want, I believe in safety.
Yeah, okay. So, you're going to put the gate in the rear, the left rear of the grassy area?
Yeah, I was thinking right here.
Okay. Yeah.
This is a cooler?
Yeah.
Okay.
Make that part of it.
Yeah.
So, I guess your option is, would you like to think about this, go back and come back another date, and come back with a redesigned plan that fits your business, that takes these requests into consideration?
Yeah, because if we approve, we're approving the plan, so it's a good idea to get it, so we like it.
That makes sense. When could we get back before you?
Could we continue it to the 17?
Sure.
6:10 PM.
Yep. Do we need a motion?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion to continue this meeting until December 17. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Zero.
At what time?
6:10.
6:10.
Okay. I know exactly.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Oh, if I may, just one quick thing. So, just, when you come back, be sure you have the type of fence, the height, where the gate's located. Was there anything else?
TIP certified? Just make sure that it's part of it.
We'll get started on that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next up, an update on the Plymouth Municipal Airport. Hello, gentlemen, could you please state your name?
Kent Fostick, Chairman of the Plymouth Airport Commission.
And Paul Blister, Airport Commissioner.
And Dr. Sadi is the Assistant Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to come and update you. Paul is the Chairman of Subcommittee on the Community Advisory Committee, and he's going to update you on that, and we're prepared to answer any other questions you may have related to and about the situation. But at this point, I'd like to give it to Paul and let him explain the situation.
Thank you.
Okay. By way of background, just over a year ago, we were meeting with the Select Board, and we were having some issues with two-way communications with neighbors of the airport, all in the Plymouth side, but mostly on the West Plymouth side. And with that, the Select Board felt that it might be prudent if we created an advisory committee very similar to that which was created by the Department of Public Works for wastewater treatment issues comprised of, obviously, citizens of the town and as well as subject matter experts from within the town departments. So, we took that task and created a small committee from the Airport Commissioner Group of seven of us, four of us serving on that creation committee. We went out and sought a number of different charters or plans, if you will, from various nonprofit entities in and around Plymouth, and picked what we thought was the best approach, including our own that goes back about 12 years ago, 14 years ago, when we set up the then master plan community review group called the PAAG. And it was actually, that plan was created with a facilitator from Boston, and that served largely as the framework for the charter that we then developed. And again, the purpose of that charter was to create a two-way communications tool with the community and, emphasize the and, provide the airport management officers an opportunity to educate the community. So, a lot of misunderstanding about what the airport can do, not do, who it reports to, et cetera. And we felt that this, and the Select Board agreed, and that that was an important component of the citizen, of the Community Advisory Committee. So, having done that, we actually drafted that. The Select Board made a number of changes, and I believe you've all received a copy of that charter or that plan. I was assured that you had.
I don't think so.
I think so. Now, all right, well, I will leave the copy I have for your, for distribution to you. I don't need it. I'll let you, I don't have it in sufficient numbers, but I'll leave it with you. So, the Select Board approved that in as recently as October and set forth, and again, it is a draft charter or a draft plan. So, next, based on that, we all needed to obviously formulate the actual committee members themselves or the community members. It comprised of eight Plymouth residents, four Carver residents, one Airport Commissioner, and two non-voting members, one representing the full-time, I'll call them operations experts from the airport, and another one from the airport users group. That could be a representative from one of the flight schools or from one of the jet operators or some other entity that's using the airport. So, that is why we're actually here tonight. We are out in the process right now soliciting those members with an application form. I will, I also have that, and I was assured you had copies of that, but I will leave that with you as well. And it contains a fairly, what we think is a comprehensive set of questions for determining the appropriate members to be on this advisory committee. And I'm going to stress advisory, because it is not a rule-making committee, it is not a law, based in law, committee, because the airport is run by Chapter 90, Section 51, blah, 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 and under the mass, obviously, mass general laws. So, we have some very strict compliance issues and makeup issues in terms of what we are allowed to do and not do. However, setting up this committee is, or this, yeah, this advisory committee. However, setting up this committee is, or this, yeah, this advisory committee is important to us, and having the, the appropriate Carver members on board is also, we feel, very appropriate. Having said that, we do have two applicants that have found their way to the Plymouth Town Hall, and what we will do is forward those back to you for your vetting. But what we would like to do is then, if, and I think sufficient word is getting out, and if not, again, I will leave the application package, you can spread that as you wish. We've done a fairly decent job, it's on our airport webpage, you can steer people to that if you choose to do that, to make it simpler for you. And then once we think there are enough representatives or candidates put forward, and I suggest that you do the appointing based on what you feel is a fair representation of the community of Carver for airport interest. There are a number of things that we have not determined yet as it relates to the, the what, where, and, and when of the actual advisory committee. The beginning is obviously just establishing this group of individuals. The charter that we created is a draft, they will take that draft and amend it as they feel appropriate. And obviously, any amendments or changes, modifications, we'd need to go back to the Plymouth Select Board, and they will do the final approval. Again, the charter is pretty straightforward, and again, it sets the groundwork of the framework for a good set of two-way discussions between community members and the airport, and the airport users. We anticipate, we don't have this ironed down yet, but we expect that the appointments would be for one year or more. How we do that, we haven't nailed that down, again, we would like to see the, the advisory committee establish that and, and provide that information back so we can get that approved by the Select Board. We anticipate meetings would be once a month, probably in the after, late afternoon or early evening to accommodate, you know, the working force that is out there that are apt to be applying for these positions. And again, let them establish how they would prefer to meet. And we'll also leave Zoom as a opportunity to allow for a little more flexibility and, for participation. And I think that's it, I'll pause there and answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board, Ms. Jones?
Thank you, I'm not familiar with the airport policy or the legal aspect of it, but I've always been curious why Carver doesn't have a member on the actual commission. I mean, a lot of the airport is in the town of Carver.
Originally, the airport was all in Plymouth, and as it grew, it grew into Carver. And initially, when, this is my understanding, is that the, there were expenses involved and with establishing the commission and doing work on the five percent, some of the F A A, when the F A A makes a grant, it's a ninety percent grant, five percent from the state and five percent from the town. And at that point, it was all provided by Plymouth, so the commission is a Plymouth commission.
But my, that's, my question is, why isn't there currently at least one member of the town of Carver on the commission?
The, it's, well, I, I don't, I'm not an attorney either, so I can't answer that directly. But it was established by the town of Plymouth, and it is a Plymouth Airport Commission.
I understand, but it's now, large, there's a large part of it in Carver.
There is a part of it in Plymouth, in Carver, and I agree with you, and we have, Ed James attends all of our meetings as kind of representative over the past few years.
But he's not a voting member, is that correct?
No, he's not.
And that's my question, why not?
I, I'd have to get an answer from an attorney to tell you that.
Okay, that would be great to know, I appreciate it.
If we could know, number one, what, you know, what would it take, what's the process should we request?
Sure.
A voting number.
Yep.
Any other questions from the board?
I'm just thinking, on the advisory committee, and I, and I, it really, it's not just the additional runway, right, isn't it?
That's correct.
With communications to residents and things of that nature?
It's a communications method, right.
Okay.
And it's, it, I believe our intent is that it would be a standing committee that would perhaps be a ten-year commitment, not, not a commit by individuals, but that we would continue it. The PAG, as we did twelve, fourteen years ago, ended at the time, that time. And so this is an attempt to have a continuing forum to have response.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Townsend. Just one, one question that just occurred to me, who is the appointing authority for the four members of this group from Carver? Is the Carver Select Board the appointing authority?
I'm sorry, there was, there was a little, Paul was talking about Plymouth, you guys, I'm sorry, Carver appoints the people from.
We appoint the four members from Carver.
So when we use the term Select Board, you are the appointing authority from here. And, and we want anonymity from that, in other words, we want you to, we don't want it to appear that the airport is appointing these people, we want it to be your decision, not our decision, and certainly not the town of Plymouth either.
So it's, but it's the Carver Select Board, not the Plymouth Select Board, good points, thank you.
A little misunderstanding there.
No, no problems, thank you.
Clearly yours.
Mr. Gannon, do you have something you want to say?
Yeah.
Mr. Townsend just alluded to this, so you're looking for four Carver residents on this committee, though?
Yes, actually, one of them can be a, a Select Board member.
Okay.
We, we're, you know, or someone from the, the townhouse, I'll put it like that, okay.
Great, any other questions?
And, and we'll assist in any way we can. It's gone through, I'm sorry, Matt, our, Matt Cordino, who is our airport manager, had a personal issue with his father-in-law tonight, and he's not here, but he's the one who said to us that, that the town had received copies of, of the tentative charter and also the application. But we'll make sure we get that to you, obviously you haven't gotten it, clearly, that we'll make sure we get that to you immediately, and you can post it, we have it on our, our website, and, you know, we'll go through that process.
Ms. Jones?
And if you could please provide us with the answer to the question I posed? Yes, thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item, the applicant for Carver Housing Authority, Jeffrey Valboni. Is, Jeffrey here, great.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Valboni. Thank you for your application, is there anything you'd like the board to know?
Um, no, I attended a press meeting last month, I couldn't vote because I wasn't sworn in.
I'm sorry, could you speak into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I attended last month's meeting, I could not vote because I wasn't sworn in yet, met everyone. I am a tenant at Carver Housing, probably the youngest one there, in senior housing. But I'm excited, I know what's going on there, I'm pretty much retired now, so. And that's why I put my application in, and we lost one member, Jim Collins, who just passed.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
And him and I were good friends, so.
Yep. Are there any questions from the board?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any other questions, issues or concerns?
Just wanted to thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, I've been a member of a lot of clubs, a legion, helps family business for over a hundred years in Plymouth, so. Military for years, so I got a good background, so.
Thank you for your service.
I love Carver, keep from Dexbury to Carver. Deluxe Berry.
Glad to have you.
I enjoy it.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, zero, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Don't forget to get sworn in once you get a letter of appointment from the town clerk.
Okay, yep, I'm only right here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item, the joint meeting with the Capital Outlay to vote to award two million one hundred ninety thousand dollar general obligation municipal purpose loan of two thousand twenty-four bonds of the town dated December eighteen, two thousand twenty-four, to the winning bidder thereof and to sign related closing documents prepared by the town's Bond Council and Bond Council to discuss outstanding capital project balances. And just for the board's notification, once this is voted, we'll probably take a recess for documents that need to get signed.
Okay.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Kathy Kay, Treasurer Collector for the town of Carver. And as stated in the agenda item, I'm asking the board to vote on the issuance of the two point one nine million dollar general obligation bond, general purpose bond, to the winning bidder thereof, and I have, I hope, I believe you all received the documents in advance from Bond Council. So those are all what's here to be signed, there are twenty separate bonds, they have different maturity dates, and then multiple other documents, and I have the wording for the vote to be voted on. It can be rather out, can be read out loud in its entirety, or I have an abbreviated statement which can be used, and the entire vote then entered into the minutes.
Can we get a copy of that?
Of the vote?
Of the, what you said we would have, I don't have it.
Still looking for the two million one hundred ninety thousand dollars.
It's right here, right here.
I know that, but it's not in anything that you sent earlier today, Karen. Where does that number come from?
The, to you, Mr. Chair, the documents that I sent today were just this next part of the agenda, looking at the existing balances.
Oh, so we don't have anything on this two million one hundred thousand?
Yeah, we do.
The two point nine million was submitted from Hilltop at least a month ago.
Two point one?
Two point one million, so.
Two point one nine.
So the town.
I don't have a copy of that.
The town authorized a band last year for one point eight million dollars, that was for the H V A C unit for the library.
Well, this is the library and town hall?
Yes.
Yes.
So this is, we're just issuing the bonds, so the town authorized a note, and this is a meeting to approve it.
So this is old news.
The Capitol Committee, this has already been approved.
I feel better now. This was approved last year.
Yes.
Yeah.
This is just what, the, the.
Issuance of the.
The steps taken.
But all this documentation that you sent, could you send a copy if you haven't already to Capitol Outlay, just so they have everything we have?
Yes.
Thank you. I, I probably have it, it's in the, the packet from last year.
It's a, it's a pretty large packet that comes from Hilltop, and it just goes over, you know, just what has been issued, talks about the debt service, you know, over the next twenty years, so I can get the package to everybody.
That'd be great, thank you.
So I thought Hilltop was going to show up tonight to talk about this and capital strategies going forward, and what's the best scenario?
So we, we were under the impression that they were going to come and just talk about the bond issuance. We have a meeting with Hilltop next week to, just to go over a capital strategy based off of the meeting that we had with S and P. And that's really just looking at a bond rating, and then we'll be coming back to the committee to have a, to have them come in and do a presentation, looking at our ten-year capital plan and providing the committee with options and how they feel that we should be moving forward with our capital policies and capital plans and projects moving forward. That was not their intent for this meeting, and it was a missed communication that this meeting is strictly for the vote to issue the debt, but we will be scheduling another meeting with the committee, going over all of their options and suggestions and looking at our entire debt service schedule.
I have a question.
Ms. Jones?
So just for the people at home, Hilltop is the winning bidder? If not, what is Hilltop?
Hilltop, Hilltop Securities is the financial advisor for the town of Carver.
Well, we had a different one before.
They've been ours for several years now, it was for Southwest, and then we went to Hilltop Securities.
Just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Mr. Chair? I'm assuming that the next meeting is going to be another joint meeting with Capitol Outlay, the Select Board, and I assume we're going to include FinCon, or not?
Um, yes, that's our plan, when we meet with Hilltop Securities, we're going to get a lot of information that we've been waiting for. That meeting stemmed from our meeting with Standard and Poor's, as they provided us with our bond rating, and some of the feedback at that meeting was, you know, our debt service policies. So we thought it would be in the best interest of the town to have Hilltop come in as professionals, you know, they do this with a lot of communities, just to look at our overall schedule and be able to provide the information. At that meeting, you know, will most likely be PowerPoint where we're looking at our ten-year plan and the projects that we have, looking at a debt service that we have for all of our projects, and then providing the town with suggestions of how we should move forward with funding our capital projects.
But you'd include the three boards, the Select Board, the Capitol Outlay Committee, and the FinCon?
Yes, we, yes, we will include all the, all the boards, just so that we keep it transparent and everybody's hearing the same information at the same time.
I think that's the best way to do it, I think FinCon and Capitol Outlay have to be on the same page as well as the Select Board, so we don't have to keep doing this two and three times over.
And can you give, maybe I shouldn't ask, but I don't, can you give a little bit of an idea of why we've got these different tranches of borrowings? I mean, the interest rate's the same, is it the term, or is it why it's set up this way in general?
The term is for twenty years, and when they go out, when they go out to bid, there's, I mean, just a lot of information within the offering that goes into it, and I can't know how much in depth you want to, need to elaborate on this.
Well, I, I just don't know why, we've got seven at one twenty, and, and two at one fifteen, and, I don't know, ten, eleven at one ten. Yeah, I didn't dig out specific details, but what's the, I mean, the interest rates all the same, the term's the same, I just don't understand the tranches, but we can go over with Hilltop, I mean, I just was curious.
It's where the dot landed on the board.
So can you, through you, Mr. Chair, are you looking at the vote of the Select Board where you have your interest rate of the four percent, and it shows the terms?
Yes, the schedule here.
So as part of, okay, so as part of the, so as part of the package that gives a further breakdown, you have additional information that came in the packet from Hilltop Securities that went over, like the library, H V A C, the actual, you know, the par amount, the premium, we received the premium when we went to bonds, so the premium is used to reduce our debt service. So you have your, you have your rate, you have your yield, and then you have your pricing, you have maturity. There are different information terms, the call dates and prices, I would have to have Hilltop Security go into that in more detail. But it is broken down, you know, by the bond pricing for each of the projects.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Germaine?
We're at four percent, and correct me if I'm wrong, perhaps Pat will remember, I think that the rest of Capitol, you, you guys even might even remember. Seems to me that when we first brought this up to get this stuff all done and bond it all, the then Finance Director came back to us, and we were looking at a three or a three point five percent rate. And that's what I believe we wanted to do, is, is it because the ball got dropped somewhere that we're now stuck at four percent because paperwork wasn't done on time or correctly or whatever? How'd we get to four percent from what I think was three percent or three point one or two percent?
Below the four.
It was under four, I know that because we commented that that wasn't bad.
So we, there's different rates here, so we have the four percent, which is the coupon rate, but then we also have the yield of the two point five nine, which determines the amount of interest that we're paying. I mean, there's different schedules that go into what we're going to be paying for our principal and interest. And so we have this on a hybrid debt, I'm, I'm just quoting based off of Hilltop Securities, like a hybrid debt service where you're paying a smaller amount, like we have a yield of two point five nine for the first year of two thousand twenty-five, and then it's two point four six, and then it's, it, it then increases up to three point seven, you know, going to two thousand forty-four, and that was the rates they thought were going to be most beneficial for the town in terms of paying off the debt. There, there's more detail, and, you know, in this, within the official statement.
So the rate increases?
That's what I'm hearing.
So we have, so.
So it's like a come-on mortgage where we can do, this is real cheap for the first ten years, and then you got to get out of your. the first 10 years, and then you got to get out of your house, because you can't afford the 11th year?
No, so what we have, I mean, they have different debt service models that we could have followed. Some, you have a shorter portion of payment that you make in the first year, or then you have some that are equal throughout the term of the loan, and then we have some that, you know, due to the interest rates that are, the yield is a lot less. So we have the rate at 4%, the coupon, and then we have the yield at 2.59, and then it goes to, then it drops to 2.46. I think that, you know, as you look in the packet, you might want to look at the bond pricing, so you can see how we are able to use a premium to reduce our debt service, and that's where you see a lower yield. And it's really based off of the premium that's allowing us to pay less than the 4%. I, I would have to get more information if you wanted me to elaborate on any deep, in any further.
Are we signing off on 4%?
Uh, that's what we'll be documenting tonight, correct?
Yes.
That's correct, so we have, we have the coupon rate at the 4% and the yield at the 2.5, but I think you would want to look at how the debt service in terms of the yield of what we're paying for the debt over the next 20 years, because it's not the 4% over the next 20 years.
I'd like to see that amortized.
What, um, but right now, this is something that's gone on to Bond Council, you know, if we were, we definitely want to see those detailed schedules from amortization, but if we were to wait on this, rates could go up? I guess we could be looking at a worse picture a month from now?
Well, we've been preparing this, you know, over the last couple of months, I mean, we issued short-term debt on it, and it's already gone out to, it's already gone out to market. So the, the rate, the rates will not change, they're not, they're not going to change, but what I can do is I'll, I can give you further information in terms of what you're looking at, at the rate, and what you're looking at the yield based off of the premium. I can get that information to you.
And my last question is, once you get, once we sign off on this, and this schedule kicks in for both debt service, principal and interest, in '26, I guess, is the, is a full year, this will add, am I correct, to our non-excluded debt number of 1.4 million? That's going to bring that up?
Yes, so our, the amount that was authorized, the 1.68, we are bonding less than what was originally authorized at Town Meeting, but yes, our debt service schedule will change, and I, if you'd like to see a copy of what our debt service is going to be.
I would like to see that.
I do have a copy.
That'd be great.
If you want to send it out to everybody after the meeting, that's fine, too.
Yeah, I can, I have, I have a copy here, but I can also send it out.
Yeah, I'll take a copy.
Everyone, you'll see all of the debt that we have for the entire town.
Great.
That'd be great. So do you want to see that before you sign off on this?
I don't think it's going to make much, I don't think it's going to make much of a difference, but it's up to the Board.
No.
Yeah.
Do we need to read the motion, because there's language in it, so.
It sounds like they have a virtualized motion.
Does Capital Outlay need to also read it?
Yeah.
I don't think so, no.
It's just the Select Board, I think they need to read something. Do you want me to read the abbreviated one, or the full vote?
I'd probably go with the abbreviated, I think, would be, would work out, and you can, we can maybe reference the full version in attachment on file?
Yeah.
Oh, that's okay.
Okay. And just to summarize to people, maybe trying to follow at home, so the library HVAC was 1,568,200, so that was already authorized prior, and then the roof for the library in the Town Hall was 621,800, so the combination of both of those is the $2,190,000 that we're, we're looking at tonight. So I make a motion to approve the votes prepared by Bond Council to the Town, that among other things award the balance to the, the bonds to the winner, winning bidder, and set the terms and maturities of the bonds, which votes are presented to this meeting will be included in the minutes of the meeting. That's the motion.
I'll second that motion.
We're motioning the second. Any other questions, issues, concerns? Hearing none?
Then we can pass this over to the, for the minutes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Zero. At this point, we'll take a five-minute recess, so we can sign some documents.
And we're staying, right? You want us to stay here?
Area 580, all set?
Yes.
All right. Call the meeting back to order. I was a little remiss on our agenda item with the joint meeting with Capital Outlay. One last component is discuss, discuss outstanding capital project balances. So I'd, I guess, turn the meeting over to Finance Director.
Good evening, through you, Chair. What I presented is, everyone received a copy, and we can walk through these. I broke them out by fiscal year, and this is just a summary on all of the capital projects that have been approved by Town Meeting that have existing balances. And so the first sheet that you have is all of the projects that were voted in June of 2024, and it says fiscal year 2025 capital projects. Last June, Town Meeting voted 1,260 in capital projects. As of November 19th, we've spent 205,495, and we had a balance of 1,054,50489. These projects are ongoing, some of them have purchase orders where they've ordered equipment, but it hasn't been expensed. But this is just to give you an updated status of where we are in the capital projects. Halfway through the year, in January, and as we move closer to the end of the fiscal year, we'll provide the committee with updated status as we do with our expense budgets for our operating budgets, we'll be doing the same thing for capital. So I broke this down by fiscal year, so that you aren't sitting with, you know, 11 by 17 sheet of just everything. So this is FY '25, does anybody have any questions?
On the FY '25?
Yes.
I don't know, I guess I got a question, it's going to be the same question I ask every year when we get into this stuff. The split between the Town and the school, which we seem to trip over ourselves to keep under 70%, because, you know, the optics are everything. But when you start adding in everything in the capital plan, then that changes the split. It changes the number, and we give them, it might be, 70% of every dollar in the Town, then they come back and they want another 3, $400,000 for goodies. And, and I guess that eats away at our 30%. And, and this, we go through this all the time with this, you know, every time we turn around, it's a wheelchair van, it's a bus, it's two buses, it's three buses, now we're going to paint the library, we're going to, you know, at what point does the school support itself? And have that be, here's your 70%, make it work. That's it. We're sorry, we'd like you to have 14 new buses, if you can do it with 70%, then buy 14 new buses. But it shouldn't be, here's your 70%, and oh, by the way, here's another half a million dollars for the ice cream on the top of the 70%. The split should be the split, and that should be it. And I've been crying this song for seven years, and we keep seeing it show up time and time again, one bus, two bus, one bus, two bus, and the only answer I can get is, well, that's how we have it on a schedule. Okay, well, schedules, I'd like to have a brand-new car every other year, and then two new cars on the off-year, and then another brand-new car. It's, it's, I'm not convinced, and I think we talked about this at the last Capital Outlay meeting, to take a little ride down to the Town Bond and have a look at these buses that need to be replaced every single year.
They're different buses.
Of course they're different buses.
Just saying.
There's no question, we're not getting rid of last year's bus, but the fact of the matter is, they're now 135,000 bucks apiece. They used to be $73,000 apiece, once upon a time. So we keep going through this, and then the, the, I don't want to use the word audacity, or maybe I do. The audacity to sit back and say, well, you know, we're only getting 69.35% of the total revenue in the Town, and it's not an accurate number. And, and it's no different than the health insurance being above the split, there should be, I don't have a problem with that, but there should be a subcategory that this is the total amount of money we're spending, this is what is costing the Town, this is what's costing the school. So if the real numbers become transparent from the school, we're still going to spend the money, don't misunderstand me, but I don't, I think we tend to hide it, and, and it's not really transparent.
Just for the Chair, I think, I think for the, we have been looking at the numbers, and for the shared costs, we've come up with a, you know, what used to be called the shared cost, we've actually rolled that back in and come up with a number now. It may be worthwhile adding this in, just to see where that sits, but I think we made progress, because all of the, you know, what was the healthcare and the retirement, we've now arrived at a, you know, if we un-split that and put it in, it actually, the irony of all that is, when you took it away from the share, you increased, the, the numbers went up, the total available, but the split actually still stayed at like 68, you know, 32-ish or so.
That's because the.
Even after we did that with, with that, but we haven't rolled in the, you know, the, the capital purchases, and maybe it might be worth just seeing, and as you're saying, you know, people just kind of want to know, what does it cost for each of the entities in terms of tax dollars and, and where's that go?
If I may, Mr. Chair, my understanding is the split concerns the budget, not Capital Outlay, but we don't put our Capital Outlay projects in our budget either.
It doesn't, but.
And the other thing is that one of the reasons, I think, that they're always asking for more, is because the legislature every year gives less and less.
I don't disagree.
So maybe we should talk to them.
Well, I don't disagree with that either, Mr. Chairman.
We, we've got a bunch of different items going on. One is just to clarify, I mean, the split percentage is looking at it two ways, that is the, I guess, reoccurring cost based on reoccurring revenues, that you, that's consistent that you can count on, so that split is designed that way, just to deal with, you know, reoccurring costs, right? But just to clarify the, which, again, I, I do disagree with Mr. Jermaine, that I think that the health insurance and the pension should be within the department itself. But the schedule that's attached to this shows that, I guess, we voted 31.6 to 68.4 is a split, with health insurance and pension above the line. If we brought it below the line, the percentage would have to increase in order to keep the school whole. So would it move to 30.31 to 69.68, so rough numbers, that's like $600,000 that because of the way they handled the split, got shifted to fund the school, which, it is what it is. But to both Allen's point and Mr. Ryan's point is, it would be good to have a total cost of, of, even if we take the Capital Outline, the Capital Outlay article, and break it down into their, whatever gets approved, as to school, Town, Townwide, fire, police, whatever it is, so it's transparent that this is the total cost.
But, Mr. Chair, if I may, I mean, it does split them down, this is not like.
No, it does, but I'm saying a subtotal, it knows, like, how much is police, how much is fire?
Well, we're, we're looking at it here in the Town Meeting, presumably we'll be able to see this.
Right, and, Mr. Chair, through you, I think we did discuss at the last meeting, doing something like that in a synopsis basis for Town Meeting, so that, so that we could.
It's clear, it's transparent.
Everyone could see exactly what's going to the Town, and exactly what's going to the school, a summary.
And I think maybe even now with moderator here, you know, maybe what we really need to do is, as we're going through the articles, almost to take a pause, if you will, and, when we talk about the budget article, the next slide and the next slide or two will be that complete breakdown between the two, because we have done the calculation. I don't, well, nobody, well, the school is not here, the school staff who helped us, I understand, but the staff who helped us with the calculations. We broke out the, the cost to run the school, again, the split really didn't change, it was kind of interesting, because we all thought it was going to change, but, I mean, you, you.
But it did change.
It, it, it did, but not as much as we had thought.
Point five, like point four, point five.
Again, I think, I think we get to Town Meeting, we have to have a pre-meeting, and really kind of talk about how we're going to present this, and I think that maybe a couple, or maybe it might just be one slide, one comprehensive slide.
I think that makes sense, we're kind of getting off track with just what we're talking about for capital projects. So 25, you've went through?
I'm sorry, Karen, I didn't mean to.
Do you want to hit 24?
Through you, Mr. Chair, no, that's fine.
Listen, I got to make up for time here, I've been here for a while. So 24 is a lot bigger.
So that's FY '25. So what we have here is, we have the budget that was voted FY, that was in the warrant for FY '24, and it has what's been expensed and what we have for balances. And so I have a summary at the bottom, if you, I mean, if you start at each project, you'll see what had been expensed and what the, you know, if the project was completed, there's a small balance. Those balances are going to be rolled and closed, those balances will be closed, and they will be included in the DORs, certification of our free cash, giving the Select Board and the Capital Committee an opportunity to figure out how they want to finance future capital projects with certified money. So I mean, if you can, I mean, I don't know if you want me to walk through all of them, but I have the status for everything, whether it's been completed, if they're ongoing, if we're closing them, if projects weren't, they just weren't started, they didn't need the money, and they, it was funded through another funding source. One of the things that we're doing moving forward, and this came as a suggestion from Standards and Poor's that will help our bond rating, is that when we do our 10-year capital plan, we need to show the source of funding, and how we're going to be funding these projects over 10 years, and so that's something that Hilltop Security is going to be working with us on, like, as you look through this, there are other sources of fundings that, that we need to look at, other than just free cash, maybe it can be funded through Community Preservation Act funds. So those are things that they're looking for, some of these projects were funded through ARPA funds, and so if you look at the status, it just provides the status. So for FY '24 capital projects that were in, voted by Town Meeting as articles, in summary, as of November 19th, we had 482 that are still committed, they're ongoing, and we're going to be closing 222,655 of projects, around two, excuse me, 226,000. If you look at the bottom where it says bond issue, the Town voted an authorization for a bond in what you just signed, we voted $1.6 million to be bonded, however, the bonds came in significantly less than what was originally authorized by Town Meeting, so we didn't have to issue debt for $1.6 million, we only had to issue debt for $600,000, and that was because the bids came in a lot less than originally had projected when it went to Town Meeting. Are there any questions for FY '24 projects?
So were all of these funded by free cash at the time, and then now, it just goes back to free cash, whatever was not used?
That's correct, they're all funded by free cash.
All of these?
All of these projects, except for the $50,000, which was the library architectural services and engineering, the Town Hall roof, the library, those are authorizations, authorizations are different, because the Town Meeting is just stating that, we're going to allow you to spend this money and issue a bond to pay for it, so you'll be paying interest and principal payments over a period of time.
But we didn't actually borrow that money, you're saying?
No, you didn't.
Because the estimates came in under, so we only borrowed what we needed, so really it's just a wash, because you just don't, even though you were authorized to spend up to that amount, you didn't, and it just, you know, goes away?
That's correct, so what will happen is that we authorize $1.6 million, and then as we meet with the Capital Committee, then it will be up to them to, if they wanted to repurpose that authorization, or you, it's just, it's authorized but unissued. So the amount that we're issuing is 600, and, you know, $601,000, the rest is unissued, but it's still, you still have the authority to appropriate money, we'll say if their roof blew off, and we needed a new roof, we still would have an authorization by Town Meeting, which would allow us to still appropriate, I mean, this is still, it's already an appropriation. But then usually, we'll work with Bond Council to close that, but that's, that's how we will move forward. There's a lot of projects, and this is something that we'll go over at Hilltop, if the Town authorized money to be spent, they can spend it, doesn't matter when, they can, how long they have to spend it, they can still spend it. So if a project comes in less than is authorized, they still have the authorization to spend the money, if it's a, if it's the same, you know, it's the same project. So you have projects that were issued, you know, it could have been like 15 years ago, 13 years ago, that were authorized, but you didn't need all of it, and so this just sits on the books.
But through the Chair, it can only be for the purpose that you authorize, like if you.
Absolutely.
If you wanted, if you bonded to, for one of the buildings here, for a particular per. purpose and it came in less, then you could only have used it for that particular purpose. You can't use it for another building or anything else.
You're absolutely right. That's correct. So we'll say if, um, like I was mentioning, if the roof blew off and we needed a new roof, we have a million dollars in authorization for a roof that could be used without additional appropriation.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I guess the hurdle that I see is, we'll hop into the next page, is that is, somebody goes to town meeting and says, I would like to request capital funding for this purpose. It should be transparent. This purpose is to buy this, do this, whatever. Um, I think maybe in one of your forms that you started talking about was, you know, we should have completion dates or estimated completion dates on these things. They shouldn't be sitting out there for four, five, six years. Really what should happen is we should, if it's not, if, if it was needed back in a particular year and hasn't been spent, we should return it back to whatever the income source, the revenue source was, and then whoever required it should come back to town meeting and say, you know, this is, I'm going to be asking for these funds, um, to finish this project. It just shouldn't be sitting out there forever.
Through you, um, through you, Mr. Chair, um, that's something that we were working with, with the, um, with all the department heads. So earlier this year, um, this fall, we had a meeting with all the department heads and we provided them with a capital project package. I, if, if anyone in the committee is interested in seeing that package, it explains what a capital project is, and they were required to fill out a, a capital project request form. And there are a lot of different criteria that they had to complete with that in terms of what the priority was, you know, when they thought the project was going to be completed. Like you said, we don't, it's really important, and I think that Hilltop will say this as well, that is, when you're looking at a capital plan for a town, um, you want to make sure that you're completing the projects that have been approved by town meeting. Hilltop Securities mentioned this when they came in, um, to discuss our audit, that, you know, whatever, you, you don't want to have a capital plan for, you know, three million dollars and a year later, a million dollars, you're turning back to use to cover new projects, because what happened to the million dollar, what the projects that you have already approved, did they not get processed? And those are things that , um, bond council and Standards and Poor's look at. So I think that as we move forward, we're really looking at, you know, kind of tightening how we look at capital projects, how we look at how we're going to fund them, and just looking at, um, how we can sus, can sustain, um, you know, our debt service and looking at how debt's going to drop off. But as you were mentioning through you, Mr. Chair, we're really trying to do some housekeeping, clean some of these up. Um, if you look at prior articles, we are making sure that what's in the article is actually going to be processed, and we're making sure that within the article that it's actually a capital project. For the FY twenty-five budget, um, if you look at the budget, our capital article did not include transfers to, um, other, like stabilization funds. In the past, you would see transfers in the capital article. Transfers aren't capital projects. Transfers are transfers. And so they would really need to be in a different article. So, I mean, there's some housekeeping that we can do, um, with some of the articles that were approved under capital, um, for FY twenty-six, if you want to put them in a stabilization fund, and I'll get into that when we look at the projects that were approved prior to FY twenty-four, because there are some balances that have been there for a while.
Okay.
Does any, have any, does anybody have any other questions on twenty-four?
On twenty-four?
Question. Um, I, I know that in previous years, there was money hanging out in the various accounts that was approved, hadn't been spent. There was a sweep of a lot of those accounts. That's how we made ends meet the past couple of years. Is what you're saying now, and, and do you think that if, I don't know, pick a number, let's say that somebody wants a million dollars for some, a piece of equipment, and that piece of equipment comes in at nine hundred thousand, does it take town meeting to put the hundred thousand back into the kitty, or what happens to that other hundred thousand dollars?
No.
Now, let's assume for a moment, we did not bond it. We, we took it out of free cash, we authorized the million dollars, it only, we only spent nine hundred thousand dollars, but town meeting authorized the million. What happens to the other hundred thousand?
Goes back to free cash?
So, um, through you, Mr. Chair, for projects that are approved based off the funding source of free cash, the best practice is if you have a balance and the practice is complete, you close it, and that balance rolls into free cash, and then you have a proper number to use in the next fiscal year to cover different capital projects or other needs that you have.
Because in the past, that's not exactly what happened.
Or you could, or you could use that, or you may not want to use it for capital. Maybe your free cash number comes in, you want to put more into stabilization. Maybe you want to put money into debt stabilization. You know, as we look at our capital projects and depending on what Hilltop comes back, um, to the town with, maybe there are some opportunities to, um, bond projects, projects in the future as debt drops off, but we can then put money aside to cover those payments so that you're not taking the head in the operating budget, because it will be a different source of funding.
Just, uh.
Okay, Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, so it's a best practice. I mean, you said it's been done differently in the past. You can actually write an article and move the money into wherever you want to move it at town meeting, but the best practice, the better practice is to roll it back into free cash and reappropriate it.
Well, I know there were several, several accounts previously.
Yeah.
That, you know, there was a quarter of a million dollars sitting in this one, and it had been there since two thousand sixteen.
And you'd move it out.
And then there was two hundred thousand dollars over in this pocket, and it'd been this in two thousand seventeen, and, you know, it was, and here we are being told that we're nine hundred thousand short for the overall budget year, but you got this money sitting in all these accounts that hadn't been touched in, in five, six, seven, eight years.
Right.
So, you know, obviously, we swept it, but.
Through you, Chair, and you make a good point, you know, as we're looking at trying to fund new capital projects, we are doing a lot of housekeeping to make sure we can close things that have been sitting on the books for years and years and years.
Yeah, that's a big deal.
And move forward, because if you have a half a million dollars just sitting around, that half a million dollars could have been used to cover other needs for the town.
Right. All right, any other questions on, okay, twenty-four, I think we're good.
So the next page, these are the prior year projects that you're talking about. So, um, I grouped these for any, um, anything prior to FY twenty-four. And I was just trying to, you know, make it easier to kind of go through all the capital projects so people could see through each fiscal year what this report represents. These are all of the existing balances from capital articles that were approved by town meeting going back to two thousand and sixteen. And, um, so within town meeting, just looking at the first one, it says department benefits. That's kind of the category of unemployment and health insurance. It's within the benefits. This, um, budget was housed within the select board's budget because it was, um, authorized as an appropriation in an article. Um, it can be legally carried forward from year to year as a continuing appropriation. So we have an article from two thousand FY eighteen for unemployment. The balance is fifty-four, two forty-four ninety-eight. That's carried forward, and it's going to sit on the books until at some point we need to use it. Same thing with health insurance. Two thousand seventeen, town meeting voted within the capital article. That's why you're still seeing it here and on this report, even though it's not a capital project, probably should have gone in, it maybe, I mean, it should have gone into, you know, like a, a stabilization fund.
Yeah, reserve.
A reserve fund. Um, but it's, it's here, so that's.
Is that still there?
That's still available, it's still sitting as a continuing.
So there were two, there were two, because we took two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of one. There were, there were several of these.
Yeah, these are the ones.
Anticipating health insurances. I know we took one of the accounts and we grabbed that.
Through you, Mr. Through you, um, Mr. Chair, you had a lot of existing balances that you used to cover future capital projects. You're not going to see them on the list because they're not available, because you used them to cover future projects. So if you look at your previous articles, if you look at the FY twenty-four articles, they're prior year projects that you're using to cover your FY twenty-four projects. And so this represents the balance of what's still remaining. We have, um.
Okay, but, but, to jump around, I mean, the one thing that jumps out at me that's waving at me is two thousand eighteen townwide tech upgrades.
I was looking at that, too.
I just pulled up the, the two thousand eighteen warrant. We approved a hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars at town meeting for IT upgrades. That was in two thousand eighteen. So it's now been seven years, six years, whatever.
Now we need to do it again.
Fiscally, I'm not sure how we're going to do it, but we only spent eighty thousand dollars. So I would say that's a return to town meeting, a return to free cash, and we have a project, a detailed project set up. Sorry, what's going on?
And then last year, we approved thirty-three thousand, three hundred and forty for technology.
Jen, use the mic, so people can hear you at home.
And then last year, we approved thirty-three thousand, three hundred and forty for technology, when we already have a hundred and twenty thousand sitting in the, in the bucket.
Could I make a comment through you, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I think that if there's questions that you have on the balances that, of existing appropriations, that we get a list of the projects that are committed by that department, so you can see what projects they're using this money for. Because what happens with, um, capital articles, it's very important that you, um, you, um, make a note of what's discretionary and what's non-discretion, what the actual project you're actually going to be funding for, you know, for IT. When you approve an article for IT upgrades, that could include ten or fifteen, twenty things. I mean, that could go on year after year, and because it's been authorized, it still can continue as a continuing appropriation. So I think that my advice would be, you know, moving forward through the capital committee to have the departments provide a list of how they're going to be spending these appropriations and what IT equipment, um, there could be life, I mean, there could be equipment that's being purchased, um, for the town, and then you kind of get an idea of what they're using money for. And I don't know if that's been a part of the process in the past where for the IT upgrades, they have a list of all the project and all the costs, but I think that would be something that I can work with the departments to see, um, what they're anticipating spending these monies, excuse me, spending this money on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, just through, through you, especially for that line item, the townwide technology, not only have we done different things, but we also spent a tremendous amount of opera money.
Did.
On upgrading all kinds of townwide technology.
Yep.
So that's one that we probably should look into and see exactly what this is, this is for the side for, because it may very well.
Agree.
Be done.
I'm sorry, Mr. Townsend, what's the question?
That we.
Well, the technology.
I understand.
We were talking about the townwide technology upgrades with the, the amount of money outstanding on page, on page three.
Hundred nineteen.
But was there a question in there?
No, we're just looking, we're looking to see exactly what that money was for, to see if those projects may have been completed with opera money.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Germaine?
And I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but two thousand twenty-one, replace a school minibus is fifteen thousand, four fifty-one seventy-nine. I would dare to guess that we're all done replacing the school minibus.
Yes.
It's now got mileage on it, so I don't imagine that that needs to have any money left in that account.
No, that's going to be closed out.
So these should all be swept that are not ongoing, that don't need to be, there's a, a thousand dollars here for painting the library, which, you know, that's all done, so.
Well, it does say completed. Those are all going to be closed out, so.
Yeah, she's got a list that says.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I see they're completed and stuff like that. So those are going to be swept, is what you're telling me.
Those are, those are going to be, those are going to be swept. So right now, we have projects that are completed on this list and are going to be closed out. You're looking at three hundred thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. That money's going to go into free cash. And so when the free cash is certified, you'll have the opportunity to then use that, you know, based off of what you see fit, um, for, for the town. You know, as we look at the FY twenty-six projects and we look at our ten-year plan, then you can, you know, you can take that opportunity to then, you know, as you're looking at these prior year projects, you're looking at, you know, what are, what IT projects are, are there out there. You can have, you know, a more detailed list and to give you, you know, better understanding of what you're approving.
Okay.
Great. I have, uh, Mr. Ryan? Two quick questions, two questions. One is, um, are any of these borrowed, or is this all free cash?
These are all free cash.
Okay. And then there is in the column, it says ongoing versus completed.
Yes.
Um, so does ongoing just mean it's just sitting there? When it says completed and there's money left, um, what's the difference between ongoing and completed?
Through you, Mr. Chair, so ongoing, so for benefits, that is a continuing appropriation, and that's something that if you wanted to close that, um, that's something that could be closed. Ongoing, I'm talking to the departments, they have commitments of projects that they're going to be using these funds for. Completed is that they've purchased what they requested on the original request. It's done and this money is no longer needed and we're going to close it out.
So that was kind of my last question, is who's making the decision on closing these out and turning it back to free cash? Is it, who's heading up that?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I'm closing them, um, as the finance director and town accountant, and that's a best practice through DOR, through what our bond rating agencies are looking for, and it provides a better picture of what you actually have to use. Um, one other thing that I was, I wasn't going to bring it up, but when Hilltop comes in at this next meeting, we have balances on our balance sheet. They have nothing to do with capital projects where we have an existing balance from an article. These are balances from projects that were bonded and we have additional money. There is a substantial, there's, they're just sitting on our books. I mean, it's well over like three or four hundred thousand dollars. I would, I see, Mr. Cannon has a comment.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification.
Mr. Cannon, sorry.
So Karen, um, can you close these out, or do they have to go to town meeting to be closed out?
I can close these out because they were part of our free cash appropriations in their, in the operating budget.
Okay, and you're going to go back to the department heads to see if they're still utilizing any of these funds before we close them out?
Oh, yeah, we've already done that.
Okay.
So they just won't, so what happens when you close these projects out, you just don't roll them into the next fiscal year? As a continuing appropriation.
I'm sorry.
You do, or you don't?
You don't.
You do not.
You don't.
You do not. So what has happened the previous years is that when we close out the books, that you, they will set aside money as a continuing appropriation. That's how they continue to stay on the books. I'm not going to do that this year, for the projects have been completed. They're going to not be rolled into the next fiscal year. You'll see that available balance as part of free cash certification, and then you start fresh each fiscal year with, this is how much I actually have available, um, for projects. But we're really, I think that you shouldn't see this moving forward. Um, we've had a lot of conversations with the department heads, and we are, we're having a lot of meetings, and we have meetings with department heads looking at capital. We have priorities. We have the capital committee that, you know, is going to be actively involved in looking at and what we're going to be proving, and having a really good understanding of, you know, what the needs are for the town and, you know, what the priorities are for the town. You know, we have, as I mentioned before, Hilltop coming in to look at our ten-year plan, and I think that's something that, you know, is going to allow a lot more transparency in how we're looking at our capital, um, planning. I think that the, and I've mentioned this several times, I think that the planning decisions that we make now is what is actually going to, you know, affect the town ten years when, when we're not here. So I think the decisions that we're making for capital improvements in the town are going to be beneficial for the town when we're not even here at the table. And setting that stage and setting up proper, a proper procedure, I think is going to be most beneficial moving forward, especially as we look at capital.
Okay, so, so I think that as we go forward, there's a lot here, non-capital items that are still sitting on it, that are sitting on it forever. But I think the process should be, obviously, you're talking to the department heads, but someone needs to come to, I think, the capital outlay, because capital outlay needs to make a recommendation as to, it might still be ongoing, but they might recommend to close it out. Um, and, and there should be a recommendation, but once that's done, is the final decision-maker the select board?
So, um, so for instance, that we have projects on here that are not capital projects, that are just continuing appropriations, that would have to be approved by select board and go into that town meeting to move that into a different fund. Let's say you have health insurance and you wanted to create a health insurance stabilization fund, you would want to move that two fifty out of this and put it into a step, um, a health insurance stabilization fund. I couldn't do that. That would have to be something that would have to be approved by the select board and town meeting.
Okay.
And town meeting?
And town meeting, because you've already appropriated, you've already, they've already authorized that as an expense, as a capital project.
So you guys can't do it on your own?
So we can.
But what I just heard earlier is that of this, of all of this money, one million, that Ms. Provost's just going to close all these accounts and put a million dollars back at a free cash.
But that's if you're going to repurpose it. So for health insurance, for the health insurance, if you wanted that money into the proper account, because it's not a capital project. It's the health insurance.
But you're going to move to reserve.
Yeah, the health insurance and unemployment were listed in a capital article in the past, but it's not a capital project. Something like that, I couldn't just. Something like that, I couldn't just close out and use it for something else. We can close it out. But I think that since you've already, I mean, that's up to, I mean, that's up to the select. But if you don't want this to be closed out and you want it to be voted at town meeting to be used, to be put into a stabilization fund, you absolutely have the authority to do that.
Well, what if we didn't want a stabilization fund? What if we wanted to just take the 250 grand and?
We need an article for town. Go. If we just wanna put it free cash?
Then it can just, can close up because it's already in the operating budget.
Okay, sir. Can I ask another question? This is gonna be the elephant that's climbing in the room here, I guess. And obviously, the song, again, that I've been singing for six years. I don't see in the 25 capital appropriations, assuming we seem to have all this additional extra money that's found money, are the three fire engines paid for? They're bonded. And I was under the impression that we were paying them off last year and it didn't get paid off. Are they gonna get paid off this year?
For the fire engines?
Yeah, we have three fire engines that are bonded. And I believe the balance was somewhere in the 300,000 dollar range balance on the bond. And we were gonna talk, and we were talking about paying that off last year for the potential, looking at a ladder truck. So I keep going back to the ladder truck. And the only reason I do this is the same as I said with, with you, John, at the meeting a couple of years ago, is that we were playing around with dollars and cents in the town hall. In the meantime, the sightings falling off. And we were playing around with HVAC and so, but let's just bond it and get it over with. Well, when that first came up, that ladder truck was 1.2 million dollars. Now that ladder truck is 2.4 million dollars, or 5 million dollars, and it's 48 months away. And so if we wait two more years, that same ladder truck will be 3.2 million dollars and we'll still be 48 months away.
I can answer that question.
I just, if we're gonna, if we're gonna commit to this, obviously, we're not gonna pay for it today. We're gonna just authorize to buy it. I'm sure there's a deposit. But we got 48 months. And, and by then, there'll be a lot of other stuff. The other fire engines will have fallen off. And now we can put that bond money into the cost of a ladder truck. Trying to put, and I liked Craig's idea a couple of years ago, let's put a quarter of a million dollars away. And then, you know, in five or six years or whatever, but in five or six years, the truck will have exponentially increased in value, which will decrease the money you're saving every year to put toward it. You, it, it becomes a lost cause.
Mr. Cannon, do you have something you want to say?
I'm sorry. I don't know if Karen had the, I believe the trucks are coming off FY '26, the last payment is done in FY '26?
I'd have to look.
We did look into it. And I'm going off memory here. The other thing I would say about the ladder truck, I think that's why we want to go back to have Hilltop and Bond Counsel come in and talk to us about the best way, you know, the most advantageous way for us to put that back onto the books. Because especially if things are coming off, you know, this is kind of high finance here. Make sure we're playing with the right numbers. We get the best value we possibly can.
Right. Obviously, we do a tremendous amount of digging and figure it out. But it might be to our advantage, if we have the additional free cash money this year, to close out those bonds and get rid of that. So now we own the trucks. Now we can commit to purchasing the new ones. And then it's the new ladder truck, but then it's simply a matter of the, of the logistics of putting together the bond and everything else. I don't know, I don't know, the deputy chief is here. I don't know if when you order the fire truck, do they just believe us, Eric? Or do they sit back and say, no, we need, you know?
I think we're kinda going off track here.
Excuse me, I can, I just wanna make a comment.
But we all understand the need for the ladder truck.
I wanted to make a comment through you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to answer your question as well. So the, the fire engines that were purchased and authorized, we bonded them in March of 2016. We make a payment of around 183,000 dollars a year for debt service. FY '26 will be our last payment. So going into FY '27, we no longer will have that 183,000 dollars that we have to pay. We're looking, you know, as we are looking at our capital projects, we're looking at what drop, what debt is dropping off. And we have, you know, the, the ladder truck is part of the FY '26 capital quest. So we have all the capital requests that we've received for the entire town. And that's one of the things that Hilltop will be, Hilltop Securities will be doing is looking at, okay, we have 183,000 dollars worth of debt that's dropping off. We have a ladder truck. We have an EMS ambulance that needs to be purchased. That's not gonna come in for almost 48 months. So we're looking at, you know, close to four years before we're gonna receive that. So these are things that we're all looking at, you know, for capital projects and seeing how we can fund things.
But the EMS ambulance is funded by EMS?
It, it is funded by EMS, however.
We loan them the money.
We are look, no, they, they're, for some of their, they're able to, you know, pay their debt service, you know, within the money that they bring in because it's, you know, reserved through receipts. But these are things that we're looking at now because we need to think, well, how are we gonna purchase this in four years, what those payments are gonna be? So I, I think that, you know, how we look at capital is a, is in a lot more detail than it might have been in the past. And I think having Hilltop come in, they'll be able to really give you a really good picture. And, you know, just their observations and suggestions on what we think would be best moving forward.
Mr. Ryan?
So for these open accounts, it sounds like we need to make a decision. Either A, just close them all out back to free cash, or hypothetically, if, say, the health insurance 250, we wanted to write an article to have that go into a revolving fund, we'd have to say, hold on that. When do we have to make these decisions by? Is it tonight?
No.
Or do we wanna go back on the agenda and have an item where we, we have input and say, you know, maybe all of them we close, except for a couple of them, and we say we wanna use that for a different purpose, similar?
Should Capital take it up?
I think Capital should do the work and give the recommendation, and then we'll take a look at the final recommendation.
Capital should, yeah, Capital should do it, and then we'll bring it back.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, whatever decision the capital committee makes and what the select board makes, you can do whatever you like to do in terms of the timeframe if you, it doesn't not have to be done today. It's nothing where you have to just make a decision, but we can have a further discussion on this.
Okay.
All right. Having said that, I guess we can now, we'd close the joint meeting with the capital outlay. I would like to, Mr. Gervain, do you wanna?
Make a motion, I need a motion to close, to adjourn capital outlay?
Second.
No, no, I need the motion. Somebody needs to make the motion.
I make the motion to close capital outlay.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, guys. Appreciate you coming over.
Sorry to drag it out a little bit, but there were answers that I needed to have.
That was fine.
Good seeing you.
See ya.
Thanks, everyone.
Red line. Nope, thank you.
Good seeing you. Pleasure.
Thanks.
Tom Bott, sorry. All right. Next item, the authorization for the planning director to enter into electricity aggregation agreement on behalf of the town.
So I'll make a motion.
I'd like to go.
Do you have anything you wanna present?
This is just, you know, we need to redo the contract with our, the electrical aggregation. It comes up, I believe it's every two years. I can't, was the last contract 24 years, months, I believe it was? So anyways, just to have Mr. Bott sit in with him, you know, we have our consultants advise us on this. It's pretty straightforward, but it does have to happen in a rapid pace. You know, it does go out the bid. I believe you only have an hour to actually make the vote once it comes in, so.
Yeah, and it's, it's a vote of all the representatives of all the communities that are in the aggregation.
So I'll make a motion, authorize the planning director to enter into the electricity aggregation agreement on behalf of the town?
I'll second that.
Motion seconded. Any other questions, issues or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, zero.
All right. So the next item looks like financial policies. And I'm just trying to understand what we're trying to get done tonight on this, because there might be some technical questions that we might need Karen for.
Yeah, I was wondering why she left. I was gonna walk through the policies, Mr. Chairman, just so that the members of the select board could see the changes that were made and kind of give you some insight into why they were made.
So you're not looking for a vote tonight?
We could vote on them. We don't have to. We could always take them into consideration and come back on the 17th. There's nothing wrong with that.
I guess, both your pleasures. You'd wanna hear it out and discuss it and?
I know it is getting kind of late. We could.
Well, I just, I just wonder, Mr. Chair, through you, I know we have the deputy chief here. I'm not sure, maybe he's here to speak on one ARPA request. I wonder if we could just?
Oh, we absolutely should.
Take that out of order and let him speak on that, so he could, he could go home?
Sure.
Yes.
No problem with that.
I think that'd be very appropriate.
Okay.
So just to give an overview really quick, we have 106,662 dollars and 56 cents in federal funds that have to be committed by December 31st, spent, 2024. They have to be spent by December 31st, 2025. So we put out a request to department heads. We also looked at the capital plan. And we came up with these three requests. The fire department UTV, the building commissioner slash conservation electric vehicle, and then two radios for operations and maintenance. So that brings us a little bit over our allocation by 146 dollars and 44 cents, which the town would pay. We do have a project management account in the select board budget. And when you think about the grant amount of 3,452,000, for the town to pay 146 dollars, it's not a big ask. So if you would like to speak on the vehicle, it is the most expensive item from this request.
But the question would be, what if something fails on the ARPA but needs to get paid for? Is that covered under the federal?
I can give you that update after, if you want.
Good evening. Through you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Hi, everybody. So I guess I didn't know, did you share that document from Chief Weston?
Yes.
Okay. So Chief Weston is away, and he regrets that he couldn't be here tonight, so he asked me to kind of stunt double for him and be here to answer any questions. So.
Sorry, not that document, the quotes.
Okay, so not that. Okay. So, so the fire department request is for a Polaris UTV, a 2025 Polaris UTV Ranger, four by four. That is the most expensive portion of the request, which comes to 50,500 dollars. The second portion of that, the next largest portion, is the Kimtech skid unit, which basically is a brush fire skid unit in combination with an EMS package. So I know we all love our rural character of Carver, and it's why most of us live here. But it offers some unique challenges as far as, you know, the remote areas that people go, say, the state forest, the wooded areas and things like that. This, this particular vehicle allows us to get to those areas and service those folks that, that may need help. The Kimtech wildfire skid, again, it does a couple of things. Comes with a water tank and a pump and hose on it, which is obviously good for the wildfire and brush fire aspect. And we use that an awful lot, the unit that we have now, which is about almost 15 years old. It also has an EMS component, which the particular unit that we have now, when we first bought it, the first few emergencies that it responded on were actually EMS calls, particularly bad weather. Believe it or not, our brush breakers don't do very well in deep snow. And this was a new vehicle, a new acquire, and we used it in conjunction with EMS. And we made a couple of good, I would call them rescues, a hot attack victim that they couldn't get to due to the deep snow and things like that. So it, although it's a fire department asset, it's obviously available to all the different disciplines, all the public safety disciplines. The, there's miscellaneous equipment in there for 2,000 dollars that'll help us put the radios in, the headsets and all those little peripherals that would go with the vehicle. A Stokes basket, obviously, for patients, for people that are, need to be immobilized and, you know, people that are in those remote areas. And so the total request was 63,000 dollars.
63,000? I'm sorry, I have that numbered wrong.
Yep, so it was 50, 50,508 for the UTV itself, 8420 for the skid unit, 1,298 for the Stokes basket, 2,000 in peripherals, which was 63.
I was gonna put you over by, over 2,000 now.
I just want to assure you, we have that project management line in the select board budget, and we are thankful that was approved at town meeting. So we do have the money, the 2,167 dollars that it will go over.
I make a motion, we approve the fire department's ARPA request.
Second. Your motion, we have a second. Any other questions, issues or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, zero. Who's zero?
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thanks for staying.
Thanks.
Thanks for all you guys. We're wasted.
Sorry, excuse me. Do you wanna vote on the other two items?
We may as well finish the rest, yes.
I guess.
Yeah. But the other two items are separate. That's the building commissioner in there.
Yep. The vehicle for the building commissioner and conservation agent and the two radios for operations and maintenance.
So how many electric vehicles have we purchased today? Two?
So we've purchased two. One is for the health agent and one is for the data collector for assessing.
And this will be a third vehicle?
This will be the third.
I make a motion, we approve the electric vehicle for building commissioner, conservation and planning. Correct?
Building commissioner and conservation, yeah. It would be for whoever.
And planning, I mean, there are four departments down there for two vehicles. So I, I think they all should have access to the two vehicles.
Good. Should be.
Our motion, and we have a second. Any other questions, issues, concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, zero.
I mean, they're pooled cars for the four departments. And whatever's available, they take. Not assigning vehicles though.
Yep.
All right, next item.
So the radios are actually 2,000 dollars each. If you did not wanna go over that much, we could just get one radio. And that would, again, bring us over about, let's see the exact amount.
Thousand. Thousand.
$167. If you want to approve two radios.
What's the board's pleasure?
How bad do we need the radios?
Pretty bad if they're asking for it.
So they all have radios. This would be if one broke, they would not have to worry about where to get the funding for it.
Oh, a spare.
Yeah, they would order them now and have them as backup.
So these two radios will be backup?
Yes.
I make a motion, we approve the two radios for backup for operations and maintenance.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll make a motion, approve one radio and operation.
So we'd have to do a new motion, right? That motion would fail.
May I ask, Mr. Chair, through you, why just one?
Just stay within budget, and it's only one backup, and it just sounds like it's not really needed. We solicited it out, you know, looking to spend the ARPA funds, so we asked out, and so we got backup requests.
But this is not our budget, this is ARPA money.
Well, no.
This will drive us over.
It puts us over.
By $146?
No, $2,000. So if we do one, we're only over by $100. If we do two, we're over by $2,000. So I vote.
Can't that be then paid with federal ARPA money?
This is the balance of the federal.
I'm sorry, Karen, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. I think that, you know, we have a lot of capital projects, and this is something that was mentioned by S&amp;P, that even though the funding source is ARPA, we really need to make sure that as we look at our 10-year capital plan, that includes all of the capital projects that we have purchased over the last couple of years with these ARPA funds, because this also affects our capital assets and how we, you know, look at capital assets, look at depreciation, and I just want to make sure we don't lose oversight of these being part of our capital projects, millions of dollars worth of capital projects that we just have additional funding for. So I think those are just, I just wanted to make that comment so we don't lose sight of this is another area within the capital committee in the Select Board that we need to really look at what we have in our capital, in these new capital projects and equipment.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, so if we got the two backup radios and we were $2,000 over, could that be paid for through a capital item?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, that would go into, you know, that could be part, if there was money in equipment line, that could be covered through equipment.
I don't think it would, because it doesn't meet the threshold, $25,000 to be a capital item.
No, I was saying if there's money in the operating budget, if the department has money in the operating budget for equipment, then that could be covered through equipment if they had.
They needed it and go buy it through the equipment line.
Exactly, yes.
All right, so we have a motion, we still have a second, so the motion fails. Anyone like to make another motion?
I think Mr. Ryan made a motion.
Yeah, the other one wasn't seconded, so it just died, and so I made a motion for one radio.
And you have a second. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any other questions, issues, or concerns?
Well, my only concern is that if a department asks us for something, I think there's a good reason for it, and.
I think they, just to speak for operations and maintenance, I think they would be pleased with a radio because they weren't getting any before, and I think any backup would help them out. And if they did need an additional one, they could seek funding.
Right. That's what I felt, too.
And we were trying to maximize the ARPA.
Exactly.
All right, all those in favor, say aye. 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 Opposed? Okay, that was zero.
So how did you vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want me to review the, do you want me to do an update?
Sure.
So it is a short update, because there's only a few projects left, and the question was, what if some projects don't get approved? So we met with Plymouth County Commissioners today and Treasurer Tom O'Brien, and this $40,000 for the electric vehicle, they pretty much told us a check will be cut on December 12th and handed to Glenn. So we were happy to hear that. And on these other two outstanding projects, they basically confirmed that we can still work on the project and submit invoices, and that this work will extend beyond December 31st, and they are okay with that because there are contracts in place.
Okay.
So it was reassuring to hear from the county. We were there with about $180,000, now to $176,000 now, but we were concerned about that because we're going past the deadline, we did multiple conversations with them now, and they assured us that they will fulfill their obligation.
Perfect, great.
And then just a quick update on a few of the projects that are in process. I think these were already, it says awaiting check, but we received the check. Some of the projects that are still in process that were advanced, is the Middleborough Meter Pit, so that was scheduled to be completed in November, and they do invoicing once a month to us, so we're waiting to get their invoice. They still have a punch list left, but I believe the project is almost fully complete. The deck at the Council on Aging, Dave Sedentoff met with the project manager on the project yesterday, and they'll be starting in about a week or so, and he's confident the project will be completed by the end of December. The status of the middle high school air quality project, the parts have arrived, and we're just trying to get an invoice received so we can get that in. The well generator is scheduled to be shipped to FM Generator this week, so once that's received, they'll schedule the install date. And the last item is the town hall emergency generator. We are waiting on FM Generator to receive the shipment information, so we're still waiting on that. And that's it, that's the update.
Thank you for the update. Now we're going back down to the approval of financial management policies.
And, Mr. Chairman, if the board wanted to push us to the 17th, I'm happy to do that. I don't think we need a vote tonight.
I'm thinking we probably should have a full board. We've got Mr. Hoffman not available.
I didn't notice the chairman of the finance committee, I didn't realize.
Yeah, I thought he came here for this discussion.
I believe he did also, he must have had a previous engagement. I didn't have a chance to talk to him, but it'd be good to have him here.
All right, so we're going to move that item to the December 17th meeting?
Yes.
Is the board okay with that?
Yes.
Next item, applicants for the Carver Marion Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District.
Mark Townsend.
You as well.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to volunteer to be on the, sorry, yeah, the Carver Marion Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District.
And I will volunteer as well if we need somebody.
I move that we appoint these two.
You don't want to volunteer?
No, thank you. I have enough volunteering.
Very exciting.
Yes. That we appoint these two wonderful volunteers to the Carver Marion Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District as Carver's representatives.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other questions, issues, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, zero. Welcome. Took care of the offer. Excuse me, going to town administrator updates.
I'll go fast as I get to this, Mr. Chairman, especially on the North Carver Water District, because I really don't have good news here. They did put out an RFP for a distribution system operator, so again, we're receiving Middleborough water through our pipes, our distribution system still needs to have an operator to make sure it's working properly. We did not receive, well, we, the North Carver Water District did not receive any bids, so no one was selected. I'll go back to the committee, see how they want to step with it. We have to consult with their town council or their council about the procurement here, because I believe we have to go back out to bid one more time before we can kind of solicit anybody for this work. So there are procurement laws we have to follow on this one. Same with the engineering, and then they're just not having any luck moving that forward right now. I'll have a better update when we have our next North Carver Water District meeting.
Can I ask one question about that? The distribution system operator, is that something that is necessary to file reports on their, so if they don't have somebody, how do we stay in compliance with those reports?
Right now, I believe the town of Middleborough is still assisting us with the filing of the reports that it do.
Okay.
All right. I'm sorry. As far as town administrative goals, again, we had the ARPA update just now, North Carver Water District, I'll have more information. Goal number three, work with the finance director to set up a realistic, step-by-step timeline for completing the fiscal year budget. I believe we're on target for that in January 31st, 2025. We've had all meetings with the department heads, had a first round with them. We're going to bring that back into the office and work with that. I've had discussions with the finance committee chair about how he wants to appropriate through those meetings, and then we're also in discussions with the capital committee, as you saw tonight. The good Select Board decision-making by providing thorough and accurate information, again, trying to give the board as much information as possible, as early as possible, so you can have time to review it when we come to the meetings. Completed succession planning initiative with all department heads long-term, this is something, we started that discussion when we had our budget discussions with all the department heads. We're also going to work with them on goals with the department heads, that was a recommendation of the board. I think one of the goals for every department head is going to be a succession plan, and they should put it together and we'll see it through. So Mr. Ryan and I had a meeting last week, talked about what types of goals, referred to them as SMART goals. Mr. Ryan, you refer to what the SMART stands for? I don't have it off the top of my head.
It's like specific goals, you know, not vague goals, measurable, attainable, relevant and timely, is what it stands for.
Yeah. And then the last one is the newsletter. The newsletter is out on the desk there, I believe it's the November/December newsletter, but, you know, I thought it was kind of interesting. It was referred to as kind of being light, but I think it was eight pages, so I thought that was pretty good for being light. And I'll tell you, I think it's been a great success, I really do that newsletter. Department heads are really embracing it, they want, they see it as an avenue for getting the things that they want advertised and getting out, so I think that's a good thing. The last thing I have, Mr. Chairman, and just a few things here. We did get a donation of a Christmas tree from the Buzzards Bay Coalition. They've acquired a property, and they're going to donate one of the trees from that property to the town of Carver. We are going to have a tree lighting ceremony on December 16th at 4:00. I know it's a little bit of short notice, but we just got notice of the tree. It'll be, what do I want to say, a little sedate this year, maybe? It won't be as vigorous as we might want it to be, because if we have a little bit more time to plan it out, we'll probably be able to do a little bit better with getting, you know, maybe some, a choir here, somebody from the school band, or somebody of that nature. I'm not sure we're going to be able to do that on the 16th, but we'll do the best we can with the short notice.
Where's the tree going?
Mr. Ken, is that outside?
Yes, it'll be outside, 4:00, in front of the gazebo.
Nice, okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that. It was on the capital plan, you saw it, the fire department has rehabbed the two main training burn rooms over at their facility, so that's a good thing. I believe they're getting another eight years of service out of that, so good use of capital planning right there. And the last thing I want to do is I want to call out the library. They have an annual book club potluck on Wednesday, December 4th at 2:00. They ask for finger food and a favorite book to share, so I think they're always trying to entice people to come into the library. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Next item, topic's not really anticipated, we don't have anything there. Approval of minutes for November 12th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion seconded. Any other questions, issues, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, zero. Approval of executive session minutes on November 19th, 2024, not for release.
Motion to approve and not release.
Motion, and we have a second. Any questions, issues, concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, zero.
With a minutes for the 19th, too. I think we took a motion on the 12th, but then it says minutes on the 19th. Is that wrong, or?
All I see is executive session.
Says approved minutes of November 12th and November 19th.
I don't see that on this.
Not on mine.
Oh, really? Oh, where did that come from?
Oh, I see that, but yet it's not on.
All right. I must have an odd copy. Mine has more stuff on it.
Okay. Select Board announcements, Ms. Hewens?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to remind people to please support Shane Gibbs Thanks Food Pantry. This service is in Carver Square Boulevard, set of buildings, and it is for everyone in need, especially veterans.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
No announcements.
Mr. Townsend?[1720.12]